Meeting before Christmas, is it? Or no?
No.
Okay. Well, I know. Save that line for later. We'll begin our meeting as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we got a public comment from Mr. David Weisner.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Very happy to be here. A quick update on what's going on at the Gap. As of the end of November, we've had 26,403 troops or personnel have trained on the Gap. Racking up big numbers early in the year. On the 19th of November, we had our official change of Garrison Command from Colonel Robert H. Hattner to Lieutenant Colonel Lane D. Marshall. So, we're very happy to have Colonel Marshall in the seat and going forward and doing great things with the Gap. Last month, we opened up our aviation maintenance training facility. It is a brand-new, state-of-the-art hangar that contains millions of dollars' worth of helicopter simulators that are geared towards training aviation mechanics. Really wonderful to see. Invite you commissioners, you ever want to come out and take a look at that.
Thank you.
I'll be glad to take you out there and have a tour given to you all for that. That will probably solidify keeping an additional training troop load, about 1,800 students a year will come through that. And it nests very well with our Eastern Army Aviation Training Site where they train the pilots. Now, we will be able to do a very good job at training the maintainers and the crew chiefs. So, it's kind of an all-one centric aviation training site. And like I like to stress, that is extremely critical facility nationally for the Guard. Pretty much any kind of a homeland defense mission that you see on TV, when you turn on the TV, you see Guard helicopters in the air. The Eastern Aviation Training Site, technically, every Guard pilot, crew chief east of the Mississippi River will spend a minimum of two to four weeks at the Gap. So, that's a lot of good stuff for Lebanon Township. It's an enduring place. They have a huge full-time employment there. Their payroll is upwards of 150 personnel. Brings a lot of value to the Gap and to our area. We also are supporting the pre-mobilization training for the 28th Division Headquarters and Headquarters Battalion. That is going to kick off here a little bit before Christmas. Couple of weeks in December, we're going to have the troops go home. They're going to come back immediately after the new year, go through their intensive pre-deployment training, have a send-off. Those details will be announced by the Public Affairs Office. But certainly, that's our focus. One of our reasons for being is to support that. So, many second and third order effects that we're putting through to let those units be well-supported and have a good send-off. Continue to march on with our force protection gate access project, going through the design phase with Army Corps of Engineers. Right now, when we are actually looking at having the gates up on the entrances to the Gap, it's projected to be in the spring of 2019. So, it's a big milcon project. As we go forward, my commander wishes to establish a local committee, a steering committee for that. We've reached out to the neighboring townships and certainly to the county to have representation on it. And what that will do in this country in general is not our intent to deny access to anybody that wants to visit the Gap. It's just going to be the protocols to come onboard the base. That will be the same as any other DOD installation in the country. Basically, what it will amount to, if you have an approved ID, that's with the DOD family of IDs, you come in through the gate. If you don't, you'll be directed to a beautiful visitor center where they will be glad to do a quick check to ensure you are who you are and give you a visitor pass. And that way, you can come on board the base, go to our community club and various other venues that we have. So, as we go forward with that, we want to have a very deliberate and transparent process and be inclusive with our neighbors, our communities with that. So, pending any questions, that's all we have.
I just was at a function last night, celebration for Christmas, and I was observing the Christianians enjoying his second dessert. It reminded me of an event that's coming up next month out of the Gap. Is it January or February, the Battle of the Bulge?
Battle of the Bulge is always the last week of January. Yes, sir. They are prepping to arrive as we speak. I'll get some further details next time I come. Got to know a lot of those gentlemen. They have the big swing dance, which is quite a good thing.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
And I might add, as a Southern American, I'm hoping we don't have snow for the realism of that one sometime. That's right, Commissioner. Warren Forbes is a good contact, and I'd be very involved in that. Yeah? Thank you all.
Thank you.
I learned that when I saw you having your second dessert.
Thank you. All right, well, enough of that. We'll go on to our approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additions or deletions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Okay. We had received December 5th and December 6th of $314,077.32. That brought us to a total cash of $1,689,701.33. We had expenditures of $1,074,179.09.
Could you re- I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It was $1,074,179.09.
Thank you.
And the tax claim is $11,659.10. That leaves us a balance of $603,863.14.
Thank you. Move to approve the Treasurers' report?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Okay, I have a couple other things. I'm bringing another inter-municipal agreement with Jackson Township with a collection of their municipal taxes. It will start January 1st. They did not have a tax collector. She did not run this year. So, they're going to come aboard with us for collections. So, I need to have that approved.
All right, I'll make a motion that we allow the Treasurers' Office to collect the municipal taxes, municipal taxes for Jackson Township.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or additional?
That brings us up to 20 minutes of power. Let's have a couple more.
Any favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Okay, thank you. And then also, Jamie has some amendments to all our other 19 agreements because of the 5 cent increase in collection fees. So, we did an amendment to the original agreement that needs to be signed and it's going to each of the municipalities.
Do you need approval on those amendments?
That's kind of ironic here. I didn't know if we did or not.
Was the 5% increase established by?
5 cent increase. I just, some of them contacting me when it's time to see if it's going to increase. And then this is the first time that increased since we're collecting for most of them except for the city. They were less because they were the first ones we did.
So, you raised it 5 cents?
To 50 cents per?
Per bill.
Per bill. Why don't you go ahead and just take the motion to approve them? We'll just ratify her.
I'll make a motion to increase the tax collection fee by the Treasurers' Office to 50 cents per bill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is that accurate the way?
Yeah. Everything else stays the same. We still share the cost of printing and postage with the municipalities, just as we did before. It's just.
There we go, front.
Yeah.
All right, same process. Okay. All favor of the motion? Oh, scored.
I just was going to ask, with 20 municipalities, you know, with a 5% with a 5 cent increase, how much additional revenue is that going to?
I had figured it out. I don't think it was what it was.
Can you tell me what, how much the revenue this aspect of it produces for the county?
I don't know what's in our, what's in my revenue line right now. It might be 12,000 to 15,000 a year, but we also save then half of the money on postage and bills. So, that's also a saving.
All favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Thank you, Sal. Morning.
Morning.
Charlie, you're starting from New Resources. Lee and Chey from New Resources, listen. Moving on to personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Jeffrey Jacquez, booking agent, resigned effective November 29th. Jonathan Norton, booking agent, resignation effective December 15th. Jesse Miller, telecommunicator, resignation effective November 27th. Justin Steer, face worker 2, resignation effective December 15th. Thine Bozeman, regular part-time correctional officer, resignation effective November 24th. Samuel Garcia, full-time correctional officer, terminated, effective November 21st. Stephen Deppert, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective November 24th. Karina Alveson, developmental assistant, terminated, effective November 29th. And Samantha Johnson, full-time LPM, resignation effective December 18th.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Then we approve those transactions. Any questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Under FMLA, leave of absence, Stephanie and Bates from Community Action Partnerships, eight-week leave of absence, returning November 6th. Tammy Scherf, prison, 60-day leave of absence effective October 19th through December 18th. And Nicole Leback, end of the fellowship, full release of FMLA, effective October 18th, with the first unpaid day being November 4th.
Make a motion to approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers and promotions. Chiara Santana Perez is being promoted from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to General Clerk A at the rate of $972.74 biweekly with interpreter pay at $57.69 biweekly effective December 18th. Jennifer Blau, promotion from Docet Specialist in Domestic Relations to Team Clerk in Domestic Relations at the rate of $886.87 biweekly effective December 18th. Haley Snolko, promotion from Imaging Clerk in Domestic Relations to Docet Specialist in Domestic Relations, no change in her rate, effective December 18th. Keith Wannfried, promotion from Subdivision Planner in the Planning Department to the Building Co-Administrator 2 in the Planning Department at the rate of $1,557.20 biweekly effective December 18th. Zachary Luciotti, promotion from Zoning Officer in the Planning Department to Subdivision Planner in the Planning Department at the rate of $1,212.10 biweekly, effective December 18th. And David Heisler, change of status from regular part-time correctional officer at the prison to full-time correctional officer at the prison at the rate of $13.98 per hour, effective December 17th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those changes of status and transfers and promotions. Any question or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Extension Office Linda Alonso, part-time Secretary D, a new hire, excuse me, at a rate of $11.11 per hour. This is the 2018 rate, effective January 2nd, 2018. Prison Ronnie Ruiz, full-time LPM at the rate of $16.83 per hour, effective December 11th. Hayley Rhodes at the Renova Center, part-time developmental assistant, $11.56 per hour with a 45 cent shift differential December 4th. And Renova Center Renee Ream, full-time developmental assistant, second shift, at the rate of $11.56 per hour with a 45 cent shift differential December 4th.
Make a motion to approve the hirings as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve all those replacements. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board. Motion to approve salary board and the following incremental increases. Gary Verner, salary increase, hasn't achieved an EMA to the rate of $1,729.67 biweekly, effective December 3rd. Laura Evans, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer.
Excuse me, could we pull Gary's out and vote on that one separately?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll start again with Laura Evans, incremental.
Don't want to stop and take a moment.
Do it now.
We'll just do, we'll just do. Sure.
Gary Verner, salary increase, hasn't achieved an EMA at the rate of $1,729.67 biweekly, effective December 3rd.
Make a motion to approve the salary for Gary Verner.
Second. Oh, second. Sorry, it's over here. Any comment or question? All favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Aye.
Split vote. Motion carries.
Moving on, Laura Evans, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $15.6 per hour, effective December 17th. Christopher Wolf, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $15.6, effective December 17th.
Just, would there be any others that will be taken separate?
Scott Zimmerman, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $14.74, effective December 31st. Kaylin Bale, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison, $14.47 per hour, effective December 17th. And Kelly Jo Young, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $14.90 per hour, effective December 3rd.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Mandatory conference seminars, Robert Campbell from Children and Youth would like to attend the Central Region Capes New User Training in December 11th. Mileage meals, tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Dave Arnold, here from the District Attorney's Office would like to attend the 2018 Midwinter Evening at Willow. February 13th through the 16th, $1,350 total registration fee with lodging, meals, parking, tolls, reimbursement, 10 credits mandated by the PACLE Board. David Simonitis from Planning would like to complete a training on valve operations and maintenance. It's an online course beginning January 2nd, 2018, two hours every Thursday afternoon, $180 registration fee, 15 credits mandated by the PCC. And Sally Barry from probation services would like to attend the Judicial Education seminar in Pittsburgh, December 13th, lodging meals reimbursement mandated by the President Judge.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those mandated requests. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Carol Davies, Melissa Martinez, Anne Devries and Jeff Bowler from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the PDA Options Program Training in Harrisburg, December 15th with mileage, meals, parking, tolls reimbursement.
I'd like to move that we approve the requested conference, the AAA.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Diane Little from Clerk of Courts would like to attend the New User Criminal Case Processing and Mechanics, December 4th through the 8th, no other reimbursements.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Clerk of Courts request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Barry Hortman from ITS would like to attend the C.C.R.I. Encounters Training in Harrisburg, December 11th with mileage reimbursement.
Move to approve requested conference for Barry Hortman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Jessica Creer from M.H.I.D.E.I. would also like to attend the C.C.R.I. Encounters Training in Harrisburg, December 11th with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the M.H.I.D.E.I. request. Any comment or question? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Nicole Snyder, Kim Briggs, Holly Adams and Adina Smart from M.H.I.D.E.I. would like to attend the Trauma and Evidence-Based Therapy Options Training in Harrisburg, December 8th with mileage reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the M.H.I.D.E.I. request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Abby Casper from M.H.I.D.E.I. would like to attend Everyday Lives Conference in Hershey, January 11th, $150 total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request from M.H.I.D.E.I. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Holly Glady and Jocelyn Grassley from M.H.I.D.E.I. would like to attend the Community Benefits Roundtable in Luton, December 19th, $10 total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve that request. Any questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on my question about the tax collection nickel increase. It's went from $17,720 to $20,000 in 2018. Morning.
Morning.
Welcome.
No shade, no pepper is done.
[laughing]
Okay, well, for Jamie?
Yes. Make a move without any.
You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. This is the annual parent staff redevelopment authority makes with the commissioners to discuss the CDG Development Lockdown Program. This is the 2017 program. What we can tell you is to give you some background. Over the last five years, the CDG program brought in a little over $2 billion to the county. That also includes such a limited share of the funding. And previously, Dan had provided information on the activities that are proposed through this application. And we'll be asking you to approve the application as well, as well as reaffirming some plans that have to go in support of the application. So, I'll let Dan start with that.
Okay. This is the annual business, so it doesn't change year to year. Just as a little bit of background, the annual cycle involves DCD announcing the award amounts for the county and for South Lebanon Township. And then we hold a public hearing to receive citizen input on the use of funds and on past performance in the program. Then we invite the non-entitled communities in the county, which is everybody except South Lebanon Township and the City of Lebanon, to submit requests for the money. We also invite public service agencies to do the same. And then after we've received those requests, the redevelopment authority makes a recommendation to the commissioners for the proposed use of funds. We hold a second hearing to invite the public to comment on what is now the proposed use, now that we've identified activities, and then we, which we did yesterday. And then we come to the commissioners for official approval. And that, what the format takes is three resolutions that we have every year, and then a stack of pages for Commissioner Phillips' signature that become part of the application that go off the DCD. And the three resolutions that make up our annual business are a resolution to approve the submission of the application to DCD and on behalf of South Lebanon Township; a second resolution that recertifies the procedural documents and plans that the county required to have and maintain as a CDG grantee; and then the third and final resolution is the Fair Housing Resolution, which is essentially the county's pledge to further the mission of fair housing. I'll go over these resolutions one by one. I just want to make them, there's one item of business that is new this year. It would be a deviation from the regular, every-year business. And that is that with the first resolution approving the submission of the plan at the request of South Lebanon Township and the advice of our community development consultant, we've added explicit language in there that addresses a program South Lebanon Township has instituted, which is with the use of their CDG money, which is an acquisition rehab, resale program. They're buying up vacant or light homes, doing the rehab with their CDG money and then selling those to lower, moderate income homeowners. And the language that we've added to the resolution allows explicitly for the recycling of the CDG investment back into that program. So, if they buy a home for $30,000, put $70,000 in, they're in the property at $100,000 of CDG money. When they turn around and sell it for $80,000 or $90,000, they want to use those sale proceeds to further that program. And it's essentially a formality, but it was, they requested that we have an explicit inclusion of that language here. As it stands, the county is responsible for the use of program income. However, any program income that is generated with a South Lebanon Township activity has to be used in South Lebanon Township anyway and subject to approval, they're charged supervising. So, just wanted to point that out because it is different from past years.
It's like a good business model.
It'll certainly help the program go further and sustain that program.
It's referring to the $100,000 investment that sells for any.
Yeah.
We've already had that, doesn't it?
I'll start with the first resolution and make a motion to approve the submission of the fiscal year 2017 CDG application.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
So, one as the second.
The second resolution is the recertification of procedural documents and plans for the use of the administration as a CDG program.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
And I'll make the third resolution concerning the county's pledge to fair housing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we prepare our housing. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Thank you. Now, I'm leaving the Secret Service Department of National Defense to sign. I can go back to the board and pick this up. Thank you for conducting annual business. If we may, before we go, just wanted to let you know that we plan on returning in the new year, maybe a month or two into the new year, to present budget modifications to some older years, you know, projects that are finished on the budget and things like that, with one purpose being the funding of new public service activities and additional funding to new public service activities.
Merry Christmas.
Did we, sorry, did we approve that on your list already?
You did the first, you didn't, that was in the first resolution.
Do you want to walk through the project?
Well, we got copies of it.
That was part of the package. Yes, but. I would like to know what the overall CDG grants are for the, for the county and South Lebanon Township.
The total grant amount between the two, because it's a single contract with the state, this year is $402,936, which is down to about $410,000 last year. And the split is $276,977 to the county, $125,959 to South Lebanon Township.
If you'd like, or even give you a copy of the list.
Appreciate that. I need to be with you. Oh, thank you.
Oh, if you have one, go ahead and share.
Oh, great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
You sound like you're under the weather.
Oh, yeah, I'm deep under the weather, I think. Like I said to Christine, I have to thank my grandchildren. But you can't stay away from them.
All right, well, you may proceed.
Thanks.
Just introduce yourself.
I'm Kevin Trum, I'm the administrator of Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program. And I'm here today to discuss what's a relatively routine process of going through amendments for the health choices, behavioral health agreement between the county of Lebanon and the Department of Human Services. We've operated the behavioral health portion of health choices for twenty years now, and there have been a number of amendments that are contracted over the years. The one we're at now is amendment number eleven. Relatively simple amendment, primarily dealing with value-based purchasing as coming on board as part of the process. We had, again, we're one of five counties that are part of the Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative, and we do have legal counsel for that organization. And we, Lawrence Davis is our advisor, our legal advisor for that five county group. And Lawrence, again, pointed out that it is related primarily to the value-based purchasing and involves returning overpayments, initial screening requires requirements for new health choices enrollees, and the need for providers to be enrolled in the end of the program. And it also has to do with members' services and rights. Mr. Davis pointed out that Department of Human Services makes it clear that the execution of this amendment is mandatory for counties to participate. And as Lawrence put it well, the program has three years and continues to be successfully operated by the counties, and it has resulted in better quality of care, enhanced access to service, to services, and positive consumer satisfaction. And the county's medical assistance population is better served if counties continue to be the primary contractor for this program. Based on Mr. Davis's recommendation and what we know of amendment number eleven, we would ask the commissioners respectfully to approve amendment number eleven.
Is there any dollar value in there at all?
No.
Just?
There's no change.
Principles, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept amendment number eleven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the health choices agreement amendment. Any question or comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, so moved.
Thank you very much and for your support.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Rest in peace.
Hope you get well quickly.
I know.
I thought yesterday you didn't sound good.
No. No, but like I said, it's hard to stay away from the grandchildren, so it's, I guess it's worth the price to have a core.
Thanks. See you, Kevin.
Thank you.
We'll return.
Thank you.
All right, twenty eighteen county budget. Board, you got handouts? Anyone else like handouts? Handouts from budget?
Yeah.
Maybe you've got enough budget? Okay, good.
He has enough budgets.
All right, so the colored packet is, are the pie charts showing the breakdowns, are the breakdowns in pie charts and in table, table formats, how the budget breaks down, totals and breakdowns. The two page that I handed out is the written summary that I try to put together every year to hit on some of the larger points of the budget and some of the overall observations. So with that, the budget for twenty eighteen is being proposed at seventy-six million four hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred seventy dollars, millage of three point two nine two five mils, which is the same as twenty seventeen, no increase in the millage. Overall, that seventy-six million dollar budget is increasing by one, is an increase of one million nine hundred forty-seven thousand or two point six percent for twenty eighteen. The general fund separately, which is funded by local tax dollars, is increasing by one point four seven percent to forty-five million six hundred eleven thousand. Again, does not include a millage increase, and the last millage increase took place for the twenty sixteen year. Some of the notable categories that I'll point out here are that the county's support to agencies is going down pretty dramatically. Those agencies that the county provides general fund support to are Area Agency on Aging, Children Youth, Domestic Relations, Renova Center, M H I D E I, and E M A. That is going down by seventeen percent or a dollar amount of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's really a large decrease that has contributed greatly to the, to the ease of this year's budget, or making this budget a little easier than is typical. So five out of those six agencies that I listed are staying the same or reducing the amount of support needed from the general fund. Two of them that are responsible for most of that are the Renova Center and E M A. The Renova Center is receiving, has received a reimbursement rate increase from the Commonwealth that we have been waiting to hear about since, I think, twenty fifteen. The per diem rate that the Commonwealth pays Renova for the care of each resident was not covering the cost of the care, the true cost of the care, and so the county was having to subsidize that operation in the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars a year. With this rate increase, which is also retroactive, that county support's dropping all the way to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in county support. That's primarily in salaries, salary increases that they don't approve necessarily year after year, but we even then apply for waivers for some of those things, and we wait to hear, we won't know that for a long time, but we wait to hear whether those waivers are approved. So that number could go down even further potentially. But for the twenty eighteen budget, that's a dramatic decrease, and should, should remain that way for the next couple of years in terms of covering the costs of Renova. Further, the emergency management agency is also benefiting from some state intervention, that being the legislation two years ago that increased the nine-one-one charge from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar sixty-five per phone line. That is beginning to come down to the counties, and we're seeing that in additional revenue that is helping to cover the costs of services in nine-one-one, as well as some savings that the agency itself has realized from consolidating equipment maintenance service contracts, because there's a lot of equipment down there, technologically and otherwise, and they're able to combine some of those. Some of them actually have just run their course in terms of leases, and those costs went away as well. The prison budget, not really pointing out any numbers here in the prison budget, just some, a significant observation, that being that the average population so far in twenty seventeen at the prison's been five hundred and thirty inmates. The largest cost of that operation is wages. And while the opening of the day reporting center was delayed for some time in twenty seventeen, it's now up to full operation, and we're budgeting for the full operation in twenty eighteen. There is evidence that this is having impact since the population last week for the first time was under five hundred in over a year and a half. And that's a significant decrease. Hopefully, that will hold. The warden is optimistic that it will hold. He's seeing the efforts by probation and the courts and otherwise to defer some of these defendants to the day reporting center rather than going or staying in prison. So we're very optimistic about that. The total budget for the day reporting center services for twenty eighteen is five hundred and fifty thousand. The pension fund contribution is also a notable item, that being that the contribution is budgeted again for the fifth consecutive year to be, to pay the full annual required contribution. That is budgeted at three point one million dollars. The twenty eighteen ARC is going to be paid from the general fund, from agency reimbursements, and from some cash that's being carried forward, because the twenty seventeen ARC was about eight hundred thousand dollars lower than anticipated, so that cash can be carried forward and applied to the twenty eighteen ARC, thereby helping the twenty eighteen budget. The last four payments of the ARC, along with the one-time deposit of ten million dollars back in twenty fifteen, plus a good return on investments, have brought the county employee pension fund to a level of eighty-six percent funded. That was a funding level back in the spring, with the way the market has performed so far this year, and hopefully will stay that way for the next three weeks. We're very hopeful that that funded percentage will go up even farther. Debt service payments are up by eleven percent, but that is entirely attributable to the financing of energy savings improvements with Honeywell. And the life, over the life of the borrowing for those improvements, the energy and operational savings offset the cost of the debt. So it's really a net, a net zero over time, and that's the third time we're doing one of those with Honeywell. The other two have been very successful. As a result of the regular debt payments and some well-timed refinancing, the county's debt is now below twenty million dollars in principal, which as a per capita is very well comparable to some neighborhoods in many counties in the state. It's about a hundred and forty dollars per capita. Employee salary increases for twenty eighteen are non-union, three percent, court-related Teamsters, three and a quarter percent, Court Professionals, which is an arbitrated contract which we were handed three years ago, has six percent off for those employees who are on the chart, four percent for those who are off the chart. I believe we're entering the last year of that arbitrated contract. Social services, three percent. County detectives and correctional officers are still negotiating, and E M A telecommunications are three percent. So four out of five of those that have to burst are pretty much in the same range. Non-union meal reimbursements for travel and training are being increased for twenty eighteen as well as the unused sick leave buyback. For the most part, those are becoming, are going to be in line or very close to what the union reimbursements have been. Employee health insurance premiums for the county are increasing by only four percent for twenty eighteen. That is a very low number relative to what is happening in the rest of the market. Some increases are in the twenty percent range for some private employers and otherwise. Deductibles and pill payments did not change for twenty eighteen for the non-union. However, there are union contracts that are seeing increases in those deductibles that have been over time to catch up to what the non-union payments are. Also, the twenty eighteen budget includes continued funding for improving technology infrastructure as the county moves forward with operating the IT platform and application software. These are expected to take place over multiple years, it's kind of a repeat from last year a little bit. The next step in the upgrades is to replace the payroll accounting software. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside to begin and implement that process to select a vendor, and that will, that process will continue in twenty eighteen. And lastly, the capital project fund, which was created by the commissioners in twenty seventeen for property maintenance projects, improvements, acquisitions, and any other expenditures that might be appropriate or that may only occur once over many years so as not to create spike expenditures for the general fund. In twenty seventeen, that fund was used to replace some sections of the roof on the municipal building, mostly the entire roof on courtroom three, also to repair sidewalks and to replace the surface to the wheelchair ramp. And then toward the end of the, to the end of twenty seventeen, we acquired residential property behind M H I D, which will be used for parking once that is raised and the area is developed and paved. In twenty eighteen, the fund will be used for the, as I mentioned before, the payroll accounting software, repaving of the parking areas serving the courthouse, and completion of that project, N M H I D E I. The fund is maintained with refunds and allocations from the general fund. So that is the summary. There's a lot more to the budget, but some of those are the big, big things, the known things. And so at this point, unless there are any questions or any comments by the commissioners, I would recommend you adopting, tentatively adopting, the twenty eighteen budget, which will then be put on display, and must be so for twenty days, and you are scheduled to take final action on that December twenty eighth.
I'm very proud of this budget. I think the input from all our department heads and the hard work that they put in and how well-prepared they were in coming to their hearings, just in this room, if you look at Sally Nguyen working on bringing more revenue in through additional collections, and next is Barb with her passport efforts of bringing in revenue and improving service, Bob Metley with audits and collections improvement over there, the sheriff working on overtime and other improvements in his department. I mean, this is just a sample of what we have in our enterprise. And if you go back five, six years, we were always told how unique we were and how, well, this is why this is impossible. Now we have department heads that are really stepping up and trying to, you know, be part of the solution and help us to get to these numbers without a tax increase. So I think it's a testimony to their good work and all of us working together. So I thank everyone for their good efforts. Oh, and I'll tell you, the other one, Tony, or Barry Vernon, good example, has brought the hazmat almost to breaking even, and that's done that single-handedly, and you go to the warden and others. But I'm just saying, you know, those are all good examples of teamwork. Very proud of that. Anything else?
Well, I think, as I said yesterday to the department heads, that you are all-stars. We couldn't have come to this budget without your help and your guidance and everything that you've done to make it possible. And I think in addition to the numbers, the service you're providing is helping people in a friendly manner to keep them safe and to make our community better, and you shine a light on Lebanon County, and I thank you all for that. If there was something I would change in this budget, the one thing that I would prefer is that the balance of the ARC be applied directly to the pension deficit in the year budgeted. I think that is a way that you work out of a deficit without having to make drastic changes otherwise. But otherwise, I'm satisfied with this budget. Jamie, again, your guidance as well through this process has been stellar, so thank you. Year after year, you do a good job. Thank you.
As I said yesterday, I think this is the culmination of a five or six-year journey that this board has taken to improve the financial situation for the county of Lebanon. And it was definitely attributed, can be attributed to a joint effort of the Board of Commissioners, the row officers, and all of our department heads and staff. So we've just, you know, certainly hope that it can continue into the future, and I look at Lebanon County now and government and finances, it's like a well-oiled machine. Things are working well, and I think the, you know, we've heard about morale issues over the years. Yesterday, we had all the department heads and row officers in here. We asked for comments, and I think the first time in my memory, we had not one negative comment about the budget, the budget process, or the outcome. So I think we've reached a whole new position in Lebanon County. I am very pleased to vote for this one.
The only thing I'll add is, I mentioned this to Jamie earlier, that some, not everyone got everything that they asked for, but it was a good give and take, and as one of my main mentors, Bill Carpenter, has always said, if you go away and both sides feel they didn't get everything they wanted, it's probably a good budget. So I think that's probably a good way of summarizing that. Are we looking for a motion to?
Yep, to establish the rate at three point two nine two five mils and tentatively adopt the fund, the budget at that rate and put it on public display.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comment or question regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, so moved. We have a budget. All right.
All right?
I have a number of things having to do with some of the boards you appoint, some liquid fuels, and then a news release and something that's in conjunction with CCAP about priorities for county government. So first, on the Community Action Partnership Board, we have had a resignation of Ursula Richardson, who could no longer serve on the board due to a full-time employment commitment. And so the board is nominating and recommending Diane McKinney to serve out the remainder of that term until the end of 2019.
I'll move to approve the appointment of Diane McKinney to the CAP Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
The Destination Marketing Organization, Visit Lebanon Valley, has four reappointments to their board that they are recommending, as well as a new appointment to fill a vacancy. First, the reappointments whose terms expire at the end of 2017 and will be reappointed to a term from January of 18 to December 31 of 2020. They are Pat Kerwin, Dana Leith, Jill Weister, and Donna Young.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve those appointments. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
As I mentioned, there's a vacancy as a result of resignation of Charles Hildebrand back in October. And the nominating committee is recommending the appointment of Jenny Charnick of J&amp;P Winery as a new board member effective January 1, which would then go until the end of 2020.
Make a motion to appoint Jenny Charnick to the DMO Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve that appointment. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Okay, and then for the Library System Board, which you appoint, we've got two new recommendations. There are two members of the board who are leaving because of their terms expiring, and they have recommendations for replacements. First would be Mike Battistelli, who's been nominated to serve a three-year term representing the Lebanon Community Library. He would be replacing Sam Abram, whose term expires 12/31. And secondly, would be Marie Hirschman, who is being nominated to serve a three-year term representing the Richland Community Library. She would be replacing Bonnie Wagnes, whose term expires 12/31 as well.
Make a motion to accept those two board changes for the library board.
Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve Mr. Battistelli and Marie Hirschman for those positions. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
On behalf of the assessment department, I have an exemption request for a veteran exemption from real estate tax. This is a veteran who has been approved previously at an address and is moving. So the exemption would carry to the new address. The old address would go back on the rolls. That is Joseph D. West, who is moving from 371 Charles Street, Lebanon to 1022 North Gate Drive, Lebanon. So the 1022 North Gate Drive would become exempted property.
Motion, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve that exemption change. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Yeah, two liquid fuels applications, first being for the city of Lebanon for their annual fixed allocation to be used toward general maintenance. And that project for general maintenance, $25,477, which is also their fixed allocation amount, $25,477.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve that allocation. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Second one from Cleona Borough, and they are intending to use their allocation to overlay Union Alley from Christian to Dairy Mill Roots. That is for $8,200. And their allocation toward that would be $2,080.
Move to approve that liquid fuels.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Hearing not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Okay. And the last item I have is a resolution before you to adopt supporting the seven priority issues that have been identified by the membership of the County Commissioners Association, which you are part. And these priorities were adopted at the last meeting, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, right before Thanksgiving. And so there is a press release that talks about those seven priorities. And then CCAP is also asking for your adoption of the resolution. And if you do so, we would also provide that to the legislative delegation from Lebanon County and the governor's office. I don't have any one need to do this. We'll possibly read through the proclamation or the resolution or the press release or whatever short. You appropriate resolution? Okay, that's probably a better summary anyhow.
I mean, we were all there, and it's kind of perfunctory stuff.
Whereas these priorities showcase the services the county's provided and emphasize the critical need to redefine, reinvigorate, and emphasize the state-county partnership and service delivery. Whereas counties are acting to approve their communities and the well-being of their residents through these priorities. Whereas the top priority for Pennsylvania counties in 2018 is human services, system reform, and funding, highlighting the need for additional funding to address increased mandates, service needs, and caseloads. Whereas, for example, Lebanon County has experienced a 40% increase in referrals to its child welfare agency following nearly 30 new child welfare laws enacted in 2015. Whereas counties also seek to improve coordination and streamline administration to better reflect the state-county partnership. And whereas counties will continue to address the opioid epidemic through their priority to prevent drug overdose and substance abuse. Whereas in 2016, there were 16 deaths due to heroin and opioids in Lebanon County. And whereas counties will build on the progress that has been made to emphasize the need for integrated planning among state and local stakeholders and increased capacity for prevention, treatment, and intervention programs. And whereas the third county priority for 2018 is to maintain the shale gas impact fee as currently structured in Act 13 of 2012, regardless of any potential discussion to place a severance tax on the natural gas industry for other purposes. Whereas Lebanon County receives funding for environmental and open space projects through the Marcellus Legacy Fund and uses those funds to address community needs such as environmental education, park improvements, and farmland preservation. Whereas county's fourth priority is to increase psychiatric or forensic vet access in state hospitals for county inmates who have mental illness and developmental disabilities, as there are 250 beds, I'm sorry, 250 inmates across the state, including inmates in Lebanon County, waiting for just 237 available beds. Whereas efforts are also needed to expand treatment and restoration services with the prison and community systems, with the care of individuals being the foremost priority. And whereas counties also support veteran services, funding for voting systems, and mandate reform as priorities for 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that Lebanon County stands ready to work with the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania and counties throughout the Commonwealth in support of these priorities for 2018. Also resolved that Lebanon County calls upon the General Assembly and the administration to reengage in dialogue on the appropriate level of partnership between the state and counties by reexamining, and where necessary, reconfiguring the state-county financial and regulatory relationship. And further resolved collaboration between county government and the Commonwealth on these priorities will lead to solutions that better reflect the needs of Pennsylvanians, improve stewardship of taxpayer dollars, reduce costs, increase local flexibility, and assure the quality of services counties provide. And resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Lebanon County Legislative Delegation, to Governor Wolf, and to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. Adopted today.
Move to adopt the resolution.
I'll second the motion, and if you'd like to comment then, please. Well, I really appreciate all of the hard work that went into the committee of the whole at the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania to adopt our top priorities. And this is new that we're releasing them within Lebanon County because normally the board goes to the Capitol steps to do this. One of the new things that's in there this year, I found, I think, timely for us because we're looking at possibly realigning some of our voting districts, which theoretically could mean we would need more voting machines. At the same time that our voting machines are aging, we have about 375 machines. And when we purchased them, they cost us $2,700 apiece. So that, just for those machines, is a $1,012,500 investment. So as we move forward, I think that with the aid of the other commissioners across the state, we can lobby the state and federal government to help fund replacement machines as ours are aging out. We did get new batteries, but technology improvements would include additional securities and things that maybe were not incorporated in that first round of electronic machines. So I'm looking forward to working, again, with all of the top priorities. We talk a lot about human services and overdoses and the shale impact fee, and the forensic beds is another one. The veterans, of course, are top priority and fighting to get fair shares for mandated services. All of these things are integral to operations in the future for the county. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Anything else? I think CCAP does a great job there. Anything else? If I'm making a motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved.
May I pose a question?
You may.
This week, there was a meeting at Harrisburg, New York, in a college having to do with an influx of Puerto Rican individuals and families as a result of Hurricane Maria and the devastation that was unleashed there. My question is, what, if any, do you see the county's role in making accommodations for this extra group of people that are common in Lebanon County?
Well, I'd say that, you know, there were plenty between the school district and United Way and all the social service agencies that were there, trying to work out how they can get their information to those folks and help them as much as they can. That's one part of it. The employment issue is another one they're going to work when they come here. I think we're in very good shape in that regard because there's a lot of good opportunity for employment in Lebanon County. We're down, you know, always low top employment rates in the state. And so we're in a good position with all the new million-square-foot enterprises that are growing up in the northern tier of the county. I think there's going to be, it's a good time for folks to be coming in, then with Ellen Evans and others. So I think there's a lot of good happening already.
Is there money from the county's Affordable Housing Fund or anything like that that can be tossed in to assist targeting specifically this group of, I don't want to call them members, because they're American citizens?
I would say we would take those on an as-lead or as-requested basis if they fit the criteria or the outlines or guidelines of what it's for. I don't think affordable housing money can be put into a pot unless it was specifically for assisting in Habitat or something that would help get housing. But I think I'm open to anything you can do.
And that might stem from Housing Fund. The first agency that would identify that kind of need and share your view.
I would just say, I attended that meeting, and I was there, first of all, to gather information and to be available. And as I heard it unfold, it appeared that the agencies and the school districts were going to be working together to resolve this, some of these problems with the influx. And certainly, the school district, I think, faces the biggest obligation there. But I feel that in Lebanon County, with the job training efforts that we've been making through our Economic Development Corp. and PA Works and HAC and some of the employers here in the community, that we're certainly poised to meet some of the job demands that this influx will create.
I am glad we have places like Lebanon County Christian Ministries, that is the official food bank for Lebanon County. There is a new homeless shelter open there. We have also clothing there in addition to the food. So I think that's a good start. So I would encourage people in their Christmas giving to consider an additional allotment to LCCM and others that perform similar functions. I also think that, looking back in our county history, we have a very giving people and a very compassionate people. And there were many who found homes within the community when the Vietnamese refugees were here. And I'm thinking a foster parent, informal foster parent system could be set up somehow so that maybe we could accommodate some of these children or mothers with their children in getting housing and getting them through a rough time until they get their unemployment and go through the trainings and whatever they have to do. I don't know how that would be accomplished, but I thought that that might be a solution that would be at least a help to get them off the ground.
I have to tell you that, of course, aware 10 weeks or so weeks ago, that what happened to Puerto Rico because of the hurricane and the devastation, but for some reason, my mind didn't put together that, gee, we have a rather large Puerto Rican population in Lebanon County that has relatives and that we may receive this large influx. It sort of like fell out of the sky for me to learn of this. Did it fall out of the sky for any of you, or were you anticipating this?
I was anticipating it only not because I'm, you know, I'm issued, but the national news, I was hearing that Florida was having, you know, significant numbers. And I heard how some of the school districts is in the millions of dollars that it's going to cost to take care of the students. And that, you know, that was like a port of entry for a lot of them. But, you know, just by the nature of the fact that we have, you know, a sizable Puerto Rican population here, that they are going to be hooking up with relatives and so on, at least for a temporary situation. So I was pretty much in tune with that change taking place.
I was surprised at the number enrolling in the school district. That was a surprise to me. But one of my employees, her dad lost his home, so he's living with her. He came from Puerto Rico to live with her for eight months till the house is rebuilt. So I knew things like that were going on, but I didn't realize the families with all the kids and how that would impact on the school district as much as it has and will.
Yeah, and it's an opportunity. If you have good things in your closet like coats and gloves and hats, again, Salvation Army or LCCM, places like that that can distribute them, that's key.
So overall, you seem very, very positive in facing the county and the community's ability to, you know, handle.
So, yeah, I feel confident, especially with the resources that we have. And again, the employment situation is very favorable to folks coming in and looking for jobs. So I think that timing is good, too. The only other thing I want to say, if we had, if we were another year out, the new hub for, down at the Capitol Pavilion, would have been a perfect place because that was one of the issues that they had. How do we get all these folks coordinated from one social service to the other? And that's what this hub is meant to do for primary care and for other services, the one-stop shopping with United Way, you know. So that would have been great, and it'll be a future opportunity for us. But I think we're in good shape for a county our size.
Actually, I think it was amazing to me at kind of the plan that unfolded at that hour-and-a-half meeting the other day, because what they are going to do, and I think it was to be determined, but already the superintendent of the city schools offered space and Laurie Bowersock offered space at HAC for a central area where the agencies can have someone there. agencies can have someone there, and instead of them having to shop agencies and so on, they can show up at this central terminal. So I think they, they have it pretty well in hand already.
Well, thank you very much for accommodating.
Thank you for being here.
Don Walton did compliment him. Thanks for that.
Twice in one day, nonetheless.
Yeah, really.
Did we adjourn?
Yeah.
Let's have a finish. Okay. Second motion.
Second. We stand adjourned.